Okay, I want to call this meeting of the Lincoln County Commission Regular Session for Order on April 7th, 2016. Do I have a... All members are present. Darryl Baker, Phoebe Harless, Charles Vance, and K.K. Matthews. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 17th Regular Session Meeting?
I'll move.
I'll say.
All in favor of saying aye. And I need a motion to approve the minutes of a special session of the Lincoln County Commission that was held on March 21st at 9:00 a.m.
I'll move.
All in favor of saying aye. Okay, under public comment, well, let's do this first and maybe... We have Barbara McComas has signed in to speak. Barbara, if you want to...
I want to ask you some questions about the water down Lower Mud River. Now, where is it supposed to start?
I wish Mike was here tonight. He was supposed to be here with us, and I'm not really sure. Do you all know?
I can tell you what I think I know about it. I think that it would be in the summer of which you... I think that's when it's supposed to start.
The summer of this year?
Yes, ma'am. It's the... For the first part of the project.
Well, why? Well, too, the woman at the Army Corps of Engineers told me, how far down Lower Mud River are y'all going?
I don't have the specifics. I can't remember.
They're sending down... They're sending down to the Little Buffalo. That's past Big Buffalo. And I'm right down below Little Buffalo.
How far?
About a mile, if it's that long. And they say, the woman at the Corps of Engineers said that she was told there's only two houses passed there. But I wanted to inform you there's fourteen houses down below there.
Between there and you?
No, between there and I'm down to the Cabral Line. There are fourteen houses.
I wonder how many miles is that to you? If that's what they try to work out, then maybe I'll go.
What, uh...
I'm just about a mile right down past Little... I'm not even that... I'm a little bit past Kansas Real Church.
You know, what we probably need to do is get those people in there doing that, to answer those questions. Because I think I know some of the things about it, but I hate to say something is wrong. And what we'll do, we'll ask those people to be here at the next meeting. And that way, you can direct your questions to them. And then, I will say this, a lot of these water projects, why do they... They work through what they're doing, and then if they have monies left over, they extend those projects. And that's the way they've done the story. And I think what would be best is so you could have an accurate answer on that, is if we could get those people here next time. And you come to the meeting and ask them.
See, we have... We have... We've got a person in there that's checked all our water. And he said, if he drilled another well, it'd be the same all the time. It has got so much salt in it, a lad down in Kentucky, they told me, said, it's got so much saw... Sodium in it, and so much sulfur, that there's no way you can use it for nothing but the flesh of a camel. And this right here, this is our water, right here. That's our water, right there. Now, how would y'all like to... Would y'all like to drink it? That's why we've been trying so hard to get water.
I know when we originally looked at this plan, there was...
Nobody down Lower Mud River has got water like this, like we have. Just like we have at our house. Nobody down Lower Mud River, no holler from that. Here, this, see this right here? This is when it... Here's what you got in your hot water here. See what it is? It's just plain old, hard as rock. Tears all of your hot water because your element burns, so you have to change everything all the time. And we need water now, and we need it bad now.
We'll have... We'll ask them to come to the next meeting, which is April 12th.
I've got plenty more. I've got plenty more. I mean, I've got this.
If for some reason they can't make it, we'll notify you they can. And we're only asking them to be here at the next meeting, so you can maybe give the exact... Tell us where that's coming from.
I mean, you know, we can't drink the water. We ever build the water we use, you can't cook with it, you can't do nothing with it. What are we supposed to do for water now? We can't afford... The guys said, I can come in here and put all this stuff in, and shed a tank here and shed a tank there. But that costs a lot of thousands of dollars, and besides, we can't afford it, and besides, the river would get it. So, what are we supposed to do now? When everybody down there is going to get water, that won't come over here and do nothing. But see, we got to do without it down down the pass. Let me ask you something else. Why are they going up the holler store? Originally, it was to go straight down Lower Mud River to the Cabral Line. And then, it was supposed to branch off, that's what the original plan said, branch off at the holler.
I don't know how they arrive, you know, or take it to, but when we get those guys here, I'm sure they could tell you, you know, why they did what they did.
Well, I... See, the papers were what you call did them, gave the money. But I want... Next time I come back, do y'all have enough money to do the first phase?
Yeah. All the money is in place for the first phase.
All right, well, you going to get for the second phase then?
What we do, once we get started into that project, we're allowed to apply for the small city block grant for the Phase Two. And as we told you before, that's our intention. The commission's already made that our priority, that once we get eligible to apply for the Phase Two funding, we'll do that. And I know, I saw Senator Kirkland dial coming in, and he helped get the money for the first phase. And he'll be the one to help us get the money for the second phase also.
Well, it's, you know, we've been twenty years trying to get the first phase, and it ain't even started yet. How come there's nobody ever went down and surveyed everybody, say, who wants water and who don't, or anything? And took a tax beat? How come that's never happened?
I don't know. I can't speak to the people that designed it, or the architects, or the engineers on it. We'll have them here, and you can ask them.
Well, the guy, Charleston, the main guy about the public work, see, he sent me a letter, and he said, we're going to do it. That was last year. See, I come back... I come over here last February. Well, he sent me a letter, and he said, it's going to start again. I think he said early by May or April. Then, he said, no, it's going to be this way. Then, no, it's going to be this. So, it's never been done.
Well, the first time that I ever thought it could start was when we got this last monies together. And that's, you know, I don't know what they told you up to that point, but that's why I always, when we talked before, I always say, we don't like to promise things. Because a lot of people are promising a lot of things.
Yeah, I understand that.
But I... We will have those people here next mission meeting, and you ask them those questions. And that way, we could hear their answer too. Because I don't know. I don't know exactly how they decided which holler to go up, or anything like that.
Why did they change the original plan? I want to know that, really.
Well, I think you... I don't know what changes were made.
Is it going to be that Mr. Roberts, or Robert, or...
Yeah, I think he's the one working on that, if I'm not mistaken. But we can ask him when he's here, get him on record as far as what they want to do and things. So, that's the best way to do it. That way, you know, and we all know what's going on happening.
But you know what? Nobody in the United States should have to use water like this.
Well, I...
That should be a crime, you know?
Barbara, thanks for coming, and we'll let you know if that's going to be here. Okay. Senator Kirkland, you're up. How are you?
Good, how are you? I had a good day, but, uh, K.K., I'll see you guys. Very honored that you would give me the opportunity to come to one of the counties I now serve. And listen to this lady here. My passion, I feel sorry for people that are subjected to this type of water activity. This is 2016. I don't know why, twenty years ago, I don't think any of these people were here. Twenty years ago, I wasn't in the Senate. But when I was the Commissioner of Logan, and I could truthfully look at all of you and tell you, I didn't do all that myself. When I was elected, I was twenty-eight years old. I come from a little coal mine in town, and having water is a metropolitan coal library. And when I got on the commission, I understood that you have to have water. If you have nothing else, you got to have water. So, I took pride in fact, I was elected to five terms on the commission before I became a senator. And we started out, seventeen percent of people had potable water on our left area. We're probably leading the state, we're about ninety-five percent. And I just got some grant money the other day for Harts Creek area that we're working on, at what you call phases over there. And somebody said, well, why was Harts Creek put out on the tail end? They understand what I'm going to say, when you apply for money. There's small cities block grants, there's other grants, the commission sometimes put up matching money. There's different ways to do this. And you get into areas where, when I first got on the commission, we took some areas that we could get the grants easier and quicker. I want to get them off for everybody at the same time, it doesn't work that way. But one area had like four, three hundred and fifty houses. Well, they qualified very, very easily because they had a thousand, easy access, cheaper revenue sources, and everything else. So, we started getting them as we could get to them. But I made myself a promise, I wouldn't quit till I tried to get everybody water. It'll never be a hundred percent, because I know I was able to help write the new law before, when I was on the county commission. I always felt like our coal seamers' tax was not enough money. So, we put together a bill, and Delegate Eldridge will tell you that I helped write the bill, because I felt like I knew what I was doing. And we asked for five-one percent, one percent each year. And it was dedicated to solely water economic development, or something like that, for coal producing counties, which would give you an extra five percent. And I think it actually capped out twenty million dollars for the state. And Logan, we took that auxiliary money, we went, like, when we was doing, as part of the Harts Creek project, we was able to come back in to a place called Workman's Fork, and get eight or ten houses that we couldn't get on the original grant. Now, evidently, you, just listening to you, you live in Mud River area?
Yeah, I live down Lower Mud River.
Okay. And I want to go to those points of interest. If I, you know, if I have an opportunity to serve this area a little longer, infrastructure's going to be something I want to work with this commission on. When I got in the Senate, I didn't realize how many of the other southern counties were in more need of infrastructure as far as water than, you know, Logan, we'd come a long way because we had the money to do it. These people up here are quality people, these commissioners. But you have to have revenue sources to be able to do anything you want to do. And I know your heart and everybody's want to do everything, but you got to have the money to do it. So, when I become a commissioner, I got hooked up a lot of people down here, the commissioners, the PSD. And the first project we worked on was alcohol. And that project was ten years old, I think, when we took it. I got the data from the PSD, found out what was hung out there, what we need to do. And within a year or something, we turned the tap waters on for alcohol, and I think it's four hundred and some residents, was it? Right?
Yeah, right on.
Yeah, one of the bigger ones. So, then, I started getting calls from people from Francis Creek about how deplorable the water was there. We sit in with the same format, how do we get this money? So, I kept working with people in Charleston. Finally, we got the approval now, they got the water fixed to Francis Creek. And working with Commissioner Vance, and Harless, and Matthews, they let me know how urgent the Mud River project was. In fact, we actually talked, and I even made a call to you before it was even announced. I felt really good that we was going to get the money. And you said, well, I hope we do. At that particular time, the governor was able, I think he distributed, and don't hold me to these numbers, I think I'm on the number, or close. There was over seven million dollars in small cities block grants that was allocated from the governor's office that day in Charleston. We got over three and a half of it in these particular southern counties. So, people understand there is a need for the water, we've got to find a way to get there. And I don't know exactly what area you're talking about, Mud River, I don't know how many people have this deplorable looking water that you're talking about.
No, but we got the worst they are down.
How many families, ma'am, when you talk about your area, that will not be on this particular phase?
There's fourteen, there's fourteen.
Fourteen families? Okay.
And part of the houses that can't be seen from the roof.
They're just right across.
We know about them. I've lived there all my life.
Oh, y'all... Is that well water? Is that what that is?
Drill, yeah, drill.
Well, I wanted to come down here tonight because I'm working with Lincoln, Boone, Logan, Minga, and Wayne. And I can tell you from being a commissioner, this is the group you have to work with to get things done. I can tell you that. And as a senator, I will be in correspondence with your PSD. I'll be in correspondence to all three of you people. We'll talk to them, find out when is Phase Two available? How much money is Phase Two? What do we need to do to extend the, you know, accessibility of Mud River to whatever we need to do? And I'm not sure that that's the last project we'll work on that here. I'm sure there's other areas that need potable water, is that correct? So, I just wanted to come out and let you know that, one, I was pleased to work on those particular three water projects. We did it pretty quick time. I mean, I started representing you people in 2010, eleven, then I ran in twelve, and I finished up this term here this year. But four or five years to get three water projects and working with you guys, I thought we, you know, was pretty expeditious of time. We can do better. In fact, I met with a couple of people running, and I've talked to a couple of people that run for governor. And I told them that it's extremely important that we look at southern west... Southern West Virginia's paid the bills in Charleston for decades. And that's one of my main complaints when I talk to people over there. It's our time to be looked at in a favorable fashion. Lincoln County, when they had a couple of nice coal mines down here, and Logan, and Boone, and Minga. And one time, I studied the data when I was meeting with the tax commissioner over there. And I showed them Minga, Logan, and Boone County, and he knows, sent a hundred and seventy million dollars additionally each year to the state coffers. They give us twelve and a half and had us on the back, tells us thank you, but that's unacceptable to me. And they found that out since I've been there, that's unacceptable to me. And that's why when these water projects come up, these rural counties down here that we represent, I will give you all I got. There's no guarantees, but you got somewhere, I will fight for you. And, but, I'm here to answer any questions from any of you, or any question from the commission on where we want to go further. I think that I want to work with Senator Stallings, who represents you also, and whoever your delegation is from the House. I think we need to work with some of our federal representatives. We need some kind of governmental contract or something in southern West Virginia that will employ people from Lincoln, Boone, Logan. You know, a thirty to fifty mile travel zone is not a big deal now with this corridor, it's easy access. We got to get auxiliary jobs. And I can tell you, and it will benefit Lincoln, I haven't said much about this because it's not a political thing with me. But I've already been in Washington, DC. I met with the USDA chief. I'm working on how do we get auxiliary jobs on those land properties? Why can't we have a chicken farm, a pig farm, and do agriculture and things like this for people that do not want to work in the coal industry? My dedication is to restore the coal industry. It'll never be like it was, because it's so much more costly than mine in Tony Appalachian region, and Wyoming, and these other places. But we will be qualitatively a coal state for decades to come. But why can't we have auxiliary industry that gives everybody a chance to work where they want to and when they want to? And I think that's what we got to get to. So, we got a lot in front of us to look at, and I'm looking to get there. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I'm open to questions from any of you, and any of the audience.
I just want to thank you so much. Thank you advocate for us wonderfully, and we appreciate all you do for us, especially on your water projects. I know you're instrumental on this lower mud project. And when those people do need it, so I...
Well, it just bothers me when I come in, and what I saw tonight is reminiscent when I was on the commission one night. This has been fifteen, eighteen years ago, and a young man brought in a jug of brown water. And I said, nobody should have to drink that, or be subjected to that. So, I apologize, it's not my fault, but I will tell you this, I'll do all I can to rectify it.
Well, you know, he's almost eighty-two, and I'm seventy-nine.
We don't get a little...
You know, we have to pour our water, jug of water.
We live in a house up on the river to get it out of the river.
The river took our house once, but... But he has to pour water up. I put it on a hook, and he has to pull it up. And we have to carry this water to drink, bottles of water. And, I mean, it's just getting too hard for us. And you know, twenty years is a long time to try to get clean drinking water, you know that?
Yes, ma'am, and I can tell you one, ma'am, I'm glad to be here to try to help now, because I didn't have the luxury of being down here before to try to help. And I'm not saying I'm the savior, but you got somebody that will, knows water, and I will work as hard as I can till hopefully, one of these days, you can bring a clean jug of water and show these commission up here. Thank you, and here's what we got.
I'm not going to hold my breath, folks. Everybody down there said, we'll never see the first phase. That's everybody's... Everybody said, they won't even come over here, no water.
Ma'am, the awardment of the money the other day guaranteed you the first phase. I mean, I guarantee you the first phase.
But it's just hard to when it's going to start.
You know, I don't know if a lot of people understand a water project, you know, when you go in, there's three or four things you do on water. When you have a projected water project, you have what's called feasibility study. That's totally financial. You go in, you do a cost study. You do an elevation study, do we need a tank here? You do the lay of the line, you do the wage effort, and all that. Then you come in, and actually, to qualify all this, you're supposed to have eighty percent of the potential people to use that water, sign on a positive note that they will pay the fee to be attached. Then you have an engineering, you have feasibility study, then you have all the signups, then you have all that. There's about three phases before you even get to the financial part of it. And that's why it takes a long time.
All the environmental and all that stuff's going to be done down there.
Well, I tell you, I don't know if you think Phase One's not going to be done, it will be done. Areas like yours that is either underserved or non-served, that's where we got to figure out how do we get additional money to make... To get the water to you like we do to the Phase One area, and then there'll be a Phase Two on Mud River too.
Well, there's a Corps of Engineers, they got this, I got the whole copy of it. It's a whole thing about Lower Mud River, and you can get it, and I can give you a whole copy.
Oh, it's one point three millions what you guys got?
One point five.
One point five million, okay. That was about thirty-seven percent of the total money distributed to you, including total along the project.
Total project itself, something before you.
That's correct, yeah. But, uh...
Art, I just want to appreciate any time, ma'am, me to talk to you, you're very, very accessible. It's hard to get ahold of a lot of people, especially in the state government.
You're welcome.
But I know, and it's never...
He is doing...
It's never hard to get ahold of you.
I take pride in that.
Appreciate you working good.
You know, I've been on the commission sixteen years now. During that period of time, we established the countywide water plan, and we went to these different areas, said, you know, what quality water? We saw the water down in Lower Mud, and things like that. But during that time, I've worked with many people trying to get funding, and governors, and things like that. But the most effective has been since Senator Kirkland's got on there. I mean, and I don't toot everybody's horn just because they have a horn. But I could tell you, when we were trying to get the money for this project here, I took one, it took one call to get him started, as far as from my end, that he'd already been working on it. But I told him the problems that we had, and the meanings, and things like that. And from then on, I didn't want to aggravate him, and it was really good, because in most times when you contact someone in state government, you may or may knock your back. But Senator Kirkland's always been the other piece on things. And even, as he said, right before the monies were released for this project, he called and told me that he felt good about it, that we were going to get it. And that took a great deal of burden off my shoulders, because I was really concerned, because we hadn't received a zillionth of grant that we applied for. But this was the only monies that we could get to start that project. And he did, him and Delegate Eldridge worked very, very hard. And I know the governor even mentioned to me, when he gave us the money, that we'd aggravated him enough about it that he wanted to do that. So, and I, and that was this man here, and Delegate Eldridge, done that. And I really, really, I know what he's saying, and he really means what he's saying. I was concerned when that dog was barking, it might be Mr. Kirkland, or this or that. But anyway, we really appreciate what you've done, and we've already talked about Phase Two and things. And so quick as we can legally apply for that monies, we want to do that.
And when I leave here, Mr. Vance, I'm heading to Boone County now to see what we can do about their dump problems over there. That's something I, what my call or anything else, it's a county project, and it kind of fell on financial woes. And I told him I'd be there to see, listen to him, and see if we could come up to an idea or thought. But to give the governor credit, because I'm not here to take credit, and I never want to take credit for doing something on my own. But I very respectfully will stay and contact you on anything you ask me about. But when I talked to you and I felt good about it, I had a twenty-five minute conversation with the governor. And I didn't have to remind him that this is his area, this is southern West Virginia. But I did tell him, I said, you know, you will not be the governor after December. Pushed the buttons, and he pushed. And I don't know if you know how small cities block grants work. Last year, when I was able to get a couple down in southern West Virginia, there was a request for nineteen projects, and there was nine to be distributed. And I'm sure the numbers were correlated to that this year. And when I did remind him, Lincoln County is our county, these are our people, and he responded. So, I want to give all of you credit, because y'all pushed every button I had, and everybody else had all. The commission did, and I'm talking about it in a professional fashion. And the PSD was very cooperative, and evidently, the governor's office was too. So, it's a team effort. And I just hope we can continue on, and we get some problems like that bothers me. And I can promise you, ma'am, I'll work.
It's not that much longer, we got to do this, well, it'll be quite a while when you know.
Well, I want to meet with Randall Lewis, is that, is it E.L. Robinson? Is that the engineering outfit for that project?
Rick Roberts.
Rick Roberts, well, same company.
Same company.
I will make a call to them tomorrow to ask them about... I'd like for you to write down to a physical location. How many people there?
You know what? You could, sometime, you need to put some political signs down there. Where we live, you don't get a political sign or nothing. We even wonder why we pay taxes, we don't have cable or nothing. You're welcome to come down that way. I'll show you, I'll show you how far.
Yeah, I'm not asking you if you want a political sign, I got one in front of me.
We can take more money down there, too.
You should be done, haven't you?
I know, I know. I'm coming this way.
Anybody else have a question?
I'd like to show you how far and where the water's coming, and how far I live.
Now, if you think I won't come down and look at it, I will.
I invite you, Evan Jenkins, his guy came down to bid three hours with us.
It won't take me that long.
We've been fanning some...
Would you write down your phone number, your physical address? And I'll talk to my chauffeur there, maybe we can come back down here in the next... I'm talking about the next few days, I'll squeeze in.
You can just go straight on to Milton, it's about ten miles to Milton. Maybe Milton, maybe you can get Milton to bring us some water, they're right down the road from us.
Well, I don't know, there is a law now that, you know, connecting counties can cross the county borders, because a project that I helped on in Boone County, is a local PSD, that's called Ankorut. And it was just more financially feasible for them to come, extend it on in Boone County, but then for them, you know, so... Mr. Vance, do you have anything you want to ask?
None.
Art, I have a question.
Sir?
On the industrial park that's going in on the Hoback property, which is being in Lincoln, have you heard any updates on what might be happening?
Well, I was in a, I was in a meeting called Revitalization last Friday. I was there with Tom Clark, who is the guy from the Virginia group that is overseeing that project. The governor was there, Gary White was there, I think they were using Marshall University, West Virginia University. Let me tell you what, the context of that meetings, that I, and I spoke to them, and I said, we have to entrench everything in place before the sitting governor moves out. Okay? And I think you know what I'm talking about. So, that way, right now, I can tell you right now, they're looking, they're looking at the infrastructure needs, the bridge connector that they'll have to have, the road access, and everything they'll have to have. This could be a game changer, guys. And if the next governor will listen and work with us on this, on this conservancy effort, that... And you know, I heard something today, I didn't know. Do you know we have more forestry than any state in America except for Vermont? Did you know that? I didn't know that. I knew we were a mountain state, but we have more usable timber than any state in America except for Vermont. So, I would encourage the next governor to reestablish support standard speed somehow. We've got everything. We got to get somebody over there that will listen and work on job creation. And I've asked for the last two sessions to have a session on jobs. Let everything else sit over here because if you fix the job problem in West Virginia, all your social programs, numbers show divorce goes down, domestic violence goes down, drug addiction goes down, truancy goes down, everything, crime goes down. So, why wouldn't we wanna save two hundred million in social programs by creating jobs, it would take years to solve. So, I'm hoping they'll listen about it. I think what I'm getting position with, they're listening more each, each year I'm there, you know? Hope to be there enough to fix some of this stuff. I have a passion for you guys, so much Virginia, and I hope to show you I do. We just gotta work, so. I'll be around and I'll let y'all continue your meeting, but thank you for giving me a few minutes to let you know that we're gonna work on a lot of things, okay? Thank you, thank you so much. I'll be there. Okay, I'll have, yeah.
Okay, here on the agenda next was citizens, conservation, corporations.
Good thing.
Trying to call you, Miss.
I've been on the road a whole long time. Way back in, in twenty eleven, my organization was tapped to, uh, did clear those community service projects that would coincide though. Twenty thirteen, National Scout Chamber, it's now held in the state of California. We were, uh, we were, uh, very successful in that, not just because it was my program, but we did three hundred and fifty-two projects in nine counties and five counties here. So, it, uh, as it stands right now, is one of the largest community service projects that has ever happened. We, uh, wanna eclipse that in twenty seventeen, twenty-four years, you have Scout Chamber, we, uh, we wanna eclipse that for our numbers on volunteer service hours and expand it to a nine-county service area into a fifty-five county service area. So, we wanna do, uh, projects statewide. Now, we will do similar numbers in the nine counties, uh, that we started with in twenty thirteen, so between three hundred and fifty and four hundred projects is my current estimate. Uh, we have the capacity to do one to three projects in remaining forty-six counties. So, one to three projects in, uh, in an area, uh, within a county that, uh, accompany, uh, two troops, up to two troops. One troop of scouts is forty, uh, that's one bus load basically, two troops eighty. So, one to three projects that are in five, uh, very flexible, uh, categories. You have construction, infrastructure, green friendly, health and wellness, and, uh, arts and education. Uh, one part of this is going into communities to see what the community need is. Uh, we would work with you on that by identifying a key volunteer. Uh, my organization calls them a county champion. That's the point person for the project, uh, I'm the coordinator for the overall project. Uh, I would work with that county champion to establish a network of, of volunteers that we could work with for the next fifteen months to develop one to three projects. What that would entail is, uh, basically being coordinator on this side, uh, being in the county, my go-to, uh, to talk about what we need to make our identified projects happen. Identifying these projects, getting them into our process, we're vetting for safety and viability and overall scout value. So, one part of the project is, uh, giving back to the community through service. Another part of the project is hosting these Boy Scouts and showing them actually what the county's about, giving West Virginia as a whole and Lincoln County a showcase, to show off what's unique, what's special about this. An overarching goal that we have is to have some of these kids come back and they're adults and say, "You know what? We've got a two-hour detour, uh, I could go over and show my kid Lincoln County where we worked on Project X Plan Z." As far as the projects go, we can work with you on, uh, any number of things. A lot of municipalities and counties, uh, will have projects that they have identified, but they never have the funding, manpower, or in general, just the time to sit down and do them. So, uh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm just saying, we have to identify the coordinator.
Yes ma'am.
And we will do that, and then the coordinator will, how will we come up with the projects? Do we all just kinda work together with, with the, with the...
It's a, it's a process, I have an application form that I'll distribute, I'll probably start that in May after I do all the initial outreach to the counties.
Typically, who is your coordinator in counties, isn't just, I know it's volunteer, but like obviously the work group at home might do that, I'm sure I should...
Well, uh, the way the process works is I come into the county and introduce myself, that's why we wanted to get a little bit of your agenda. I don't make it a, uh, it's, it's never our policy to come into a county and dictate anything. Uh, we wanna be there because you guys want us there and you wanna partner with us. So, uh, we would come to you for that and see who you think would be a good volunteer, uh, between the commission and, and myself. We'd probably approach that volunteer, see if this is something we can be able to work for until next time. It's not gonna be that taxing, I've had some counties that have had over seventy projects, uh, to perform. We're looking at one to three, so it's a small amount of coordination, it's just, it's the upkeep of fifteen months basically, which is a lot on my end. Uh, I'll be making periodic conference calls and visits to the county, uh, just to come down and see how things are going. Uh, I, once we have our, uh, our, uh, applications back, they'll go through a three-tier process. My organization will look down for safety and viability, I'll then pass them to the Boy Scouts. Uh, after it clears those two blocks, I'll pass it back to the county and we'll review it as a whole and make sure that all three of us sign off on it, okay? And then we'll go forward with development. Uh, we have the capacity to help with, um, fundraising, media and PR, uh, project development, obviously, uh, and acquiring what we're gonna need for this project. We like to keep projects as revenue neutral as possible. Uh, that's incredibly important right now with the straits we're in as a state. But, uh, uh, it's, it's, that is a process of using in-kind donation, uh, borrowing tools and just basically doing a good job of pre-planning for a project for a single day that will accommodate forty to eighty, you know, men on it. So, it can be fairly simple.
So, it's a one-day, when do you say it was till next July, is that when that...
Uh, July seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. On the seventeenth, they've entered the county, we would put them at a pre-designated lodging site, for instance, your high school or your middle school, uh, something easy that has, uh, that can accommodate that number of people. Uh, bathroom and shower facilities and a place to eat. Uh, they would stay that first night, wake up the next day, have breakfast, go onto the project site for six to eight hours, uh, come back, have dinner at, uh, at the lodging site, and then we would do a county interact with them. So, uh, that would be volunteer-driven. So, some of your volunteer groups that are already active could come and talk about what's unique about Lincoln County. Um, and, and really introduce and interact with the scouts at, uh, at the lodging site. So, uh, they'll get a piece of that. The next day, they wake up, eat breakfast, and send them to Fayette County. And we can look at that, uh, what we'll do is, uh, uh, here in the near future, we'll distribute project applications, uh, look at where they are. We'll have to keep in mind the logistical moves for the scouts will be on the tour buses that they come in on, so we'll have to look at that. You have up to two troops of scouts, so you do projects a number of ways. You can have one project that encompasses forty to eighty, you could have two or three projects that encompass that number. And we could, uh, you know, if, if one site can handle forty and the other site has two projects that can handle twenty apiece, uh, as long as they're around their transportation, we can work within that kind of constraint. Did you all get the information sheet? If not, I can leave it with you.
You sent your email, but I looked back through, I can't find, I couldn't find it.
I brought paper, uh, beforehand, I've got some, uh, project examples from a PowerPoint that we have. I'll leave that with you guys and we can, uh, we can work on maybe scheduling another meal and, uh, we'll, we'll go from there. As long as, as long as you guys feel good about it, we can move forward. Now, our main request for this, our, uh, we'd like to have four meals that are donated from the community. Uh, that can be from civic groups, churches, uh, fraternal organizations that are operating within the county. So, breakfast, lunch, and dinner the day of the project, breakfast the next day.
Is that something the coordinator puts up?
I think yes, the county champion would work with me on that and, like, we'd put that forward.
Or even David Roberts on that, on that hand, yeah.
And this is typical, so, uh, most of, most of commissions that I've approached, they've got two or three names of people that they'd like to see. We can work on that and, uh, and identify them. My organization is gonna do a, a fairly large, uh, media event in early May. Uh, I'll give notification on that, it'll be us and the Boy Scouts of America, possibly AmeriCorps. We also partner with them, so it'll be NCCC teams that take part in this. Other conservation and service corps like mine from other states, uh, will be a part of this, so, uh, it'll be pretty large.
When you said you think the big camp every four years, and that's...
Yes ma'am. Next summer.
We were in summer camp, and the last one didn't know. Oh my gosh, there was tour buses, it kept everywhere.
Yeah, uh, you probably saw them from our projects, Nicholas County was one of the larger, uh, counties, I think they had, I think they had fifty-five projects altogether. Raleigh was the largest, they had seventy-two, Fayette was in the middle of that, sixty, sixty-three maybe? Yeah, well, it was, it was very large. And we'll do similar to that again, uh, just depending, I don't know how the budget crunch is gonna work for that, but, uh, it'll, uh, it'll make preparation a little bit more critical, but I anticipate we're gonna be able to do the same numbers.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. I'm gonna give my bag and hand you the guys that you're...
If you guys are stopping, we'll stay in touch soon. While he's getting that, um, the next on the agenda is White's way of the girl down request, and he was not able to make it. But, you have, no, he didn't even say that yet.
I have, I have governmental agreements, but that's over there under new business.
Okay. Okay, next is the update on Moore Road. And I'm going to ask Mary to kind of bring us up to speed on that because she talked to you last. And I don't wanna get it all...
Well, I'm not trying to say I don't want to be there, but... I spoke to that Greg Bailey and he said, "Between nineteen sixty-seven and nineteen ninety-eight, the statewide process was to eliminate any delta road system." Moore Road was a delta road system. And those roads were put out on a public notice based, and then based on the comments they received, they either converted them to a county route or they abandoned the road. And then, then the landowner became the owner, whoever was owning it, they owned it before it was that, it became the landowner. So, the highway commissioners, uh, did a public notice December of ninety-seven, they received no response. So, January of ninety-eight, they abandoned Moore Road, Road. So, the road is now owned by the property owners at the time of the abandonment. So, whoever owns it in January of nineteen ninety-eight is who owns the road. So, with all of that, I don't think they're gonna pay it unless you want to do something else.
I lived up there in nineteen ninety-eight and trust me, I do not remember any of this. But they say they, they say that...
He says they even, maybe we could check, Sean, he says they even advertised it in the Lincoln Journal.
Okay.
I just, some thoughts, spoke a couple, we didn't wanna go, is that, you know, we need to identify the landowner.
Yeah, what is it, they...
I said, you need to identify who the landowners are.
Yeah.
And know if I didn't, or if I didn't, that way they would know. Because, you know, if land's in there, is actually their land now, they need to be aware of any life building and things like that, so shit.
And, and Mr. Bailey did say, he's not saying that it wasn't paved after that time, but it was just probably a mistake that they hadn't got, it hadn't trickled down well enough to tell them to stop paving it. So, he isn't denying that it probably was paved, um, even after that time, but he still said it was an abandoned road and they were not...
'Cause I wonder if there's any harassment for straws, 'cause I know I'll find the road here somewhere, I don't even know how you, like, fix it, run it out, but... No chance of wave petition.
He didn't act like it, but we can try it again if you like.
We didn't act like there was any chance of it getting paved.
Well, it's petition, we sent, like, we petitioned them to, in Huntington, the first hour. And they, they told me that they would send us back their official petition that we had to fill it out.
Right.
And to send it back. But what we sent, got them to, where they were supposed to send their, their official petition.
Right, and they didn't send us anything back.
But, let's try and get that and do it, okay?
And then we could be done.
Yes. Try to petition with the, the, with the Hall's form and see if there's any chance they'll pick it up.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, I need a vote, we got a motion in second and all papers say yes.
Okay, update on the, underneath unfinished business. Update on petition, um, for the Tony addition. We got that signed by the Lincoln County Commission on Monday. And filed yesterday, so everything is done, the judge signed it, it's been filed. We are going to, I think actually, uh, well, Secretary Clark was volunteering to take those petitions around and serve them. So, we have to hand deliver a lay of copy. Twenty-seven houses, he'll deliver a lay of copy of the petition, might have everything, so they'll know.
And that's, uh, the direction of the prosecutor, the process we're trying to...
And he spoke to the prosecutor about it and they hashed all the details out and...
The prosecutor also said that it is effective immediately, so they can start...
They can get an I-1-1 address, they can register a vote, they can do all that stuff, but it was filed yesterday.
And we're sending a letter from the commission, we're for it.
Yes, we've already fixed a letter from the commission, it's been...
So, that's good.
So, that is taken care of, that's been taken care of. Okay, update on the Lincoln PSD. KK filed Monday, wasn't it, the letter?
I know the last one.
That's right, but we've got a copy Monday of a letter that he sent last spring. So, after a couple of copies Monday, I sent a letter to, um, the US Attorney's Office, just kind of asking them for an update on what's going on, for the investigation, if they're on, have they, have they done? So, I put a copy of his letter and my letter and everybody's folder. So, that is that for now. All right, that's all we have on here in the unfinished business, so, um, if you all worked over all the paperwork, so we can start it. All of them say aye, so, your business has been approved. So, if you have anything else in the open discussion you wanna mention, I think you just... If there's nothing else, then I need a motion to return until April twenty-first at six AM.
We'll, we'll second that.
All papers say aye, we were...
Who do we, uh, lay the letter?
I like it, but we, yeah, I called NASA to make sure we were doing it correctly. We, we recessed on the one where we accepted the budget and then they, we recessed that until April nineteenth. But then immediately in between, we do a turn of...
So, that one we've...